Good evening. Welcome to the 1st of June 2021 meeting of the Mainland Planning Commission. Hope everybody had a good May, and so far, I hope everybody's having a good June. So if you would, if you'd join us in the invocation and the pledge, please, by standing.
Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. We thank you for this county that we live in and the people that are here to support us. We thank you that we live in the land of the free and the home of the brave, and we thank you for all that you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If everybody will bear with me, I'll go through the meeting procedures so that everybody understands what they can and can't do. The planning staff presents the application requests to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal confirms, conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other optical regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their requests to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make the presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings which they do not agree. Public hearings. Public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Site plans, comments on site plans will be limited to 15 minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of three minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Any announcements or anything from the staff? Nothing? Okay. All right. Moving right along. Approve the minutes of the regular help meeting, May 4, 2021, subject to any necessary corrections.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we suspend approval of the minutes until the July meeting.
Have a motion?
I second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signal five or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Site plan approval, SP 4675, CKELJ, RV Storage. Consider site plan approval for a new recreational storage complex that will include five buildings developed over three phases. Property is located at 341 Southport Parkway, parcel number 03-16495, and zoned local commercial. Pete Shodinar, Tidewater Engineering Agent for Cameron Bonds, CKELJ LLC, owner and applicant.
Good evening, Commissioners. Stephanie Leaf, Planning Manager. This is SP 4675, CKELJ, RV Storage. And you may recall this property from a couple months ago. This was a property on Southport Parkway that was rezoned to local commercial, and their intent was to do the RV storage on the site. And so now they are before you with that site plan. So here is the property across from Satilla Marsh Elementary School on Southport Parkway. And as the chair mentioned, they will have five buildings that will range in size from 14,000 to 25,000, approximately 25,000 square feet, over three different phases. They also have open-air storage in addition to the storage buildings. And then this is their site plan. This is Southport Parkway here. They are showing a type E 10-foot buffer along Southport Parkway, along the entirety of the property line, as required by code. And these are your possible actions. And staff's recommendation is to approve application SP 4675 as presented. I'm happy to answer questions, and Mr. Shonauer, as well as the owners, are here this evening.
Thanks, Steffi. Any questions for staff commissioners? Okay. This is a site plan approval hearing, so anyone wishing to come forward? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting in front of... Would the applicant please come forward? Getting in front of myself here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pete Shonauer with Tidewater Engineering. I'm the agent for CKELJ RV Storage. The owners are here, Stephanie mentioned, and I'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant commissioners? Yes, sir.
Do you prefer the buffer in front, or your property without the buffer in front, the way the county is asking you, the requirements of the county?
Do we prefer it that way? I hadn't given that any thought, really. I mean, it's a requirement, so... Would you like to offer? Yeah?
My name is Jim Bonds, the owner. And initially, over at the storage, we had a buffer requirement. And with storage, it made me a little nervous, and I never presented why. It's so people can look into the storage through the chain link and just see folks at night. We limit access at night. And I thought a buffer with a lot of trees and so forth might be a problem in terms of security. But having put up a buffer along part of the area, we are just real pleased with a lot of smaller plants and then some fruit trees, which are doing pretty good. And they're spaced in such a way that I think people can still see in, and we're okay with security, and we have the buffer. And honestly, it's something I didn't want to do, and having done it, I, you know, I've come to like it. So it seems to be working out.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to this site plan approval, please do so. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to the site plan approval, please do so. Hearing none, seeing none. It's closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application SP 4675 as presented.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving SP 4675, signal five or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Public hearings, zoning decisions, ZM 4671, the Fox and the Hive Rezone. Request to rezone property located at 40, or excuse me, 6461 New Jessup Highway, parcel number 03-05349, from the Highway Commercial Zoning District to the Planned Development District in order to construct a mixed-use commercial and residential building. Patricia Vonador, the Hive, excuse me, the Fox and Hive owner. Steffi?
Thank you. This is ZM 4671, the Fox and the Hive Rezone. And this property is along New Jessup Highway. Just to the south of this property is the entrance to Oak Grove Road and Oak Grove Neighborhood, Oak Grove Island neighborhood. Just to the north, there's some commercial businesses right to the north of this. This property is currently vacant. Across the street, there's some residential, so it really already is a pretty mixed-use neighborhood in that regard. The property is vacant, although I believe there was a mobile home here at one point in time. There's a large mature tree, a live oak on the property. And what they are looking to do, it is currently zoned highway commercial, and I know the owner has been looking at some different uses for this property, and she has an apiary. She makes honey, and so she would like to do honey sales out of the property, which would, of course, meet the highway commercial use. But she'd also like to do a residential unit on the second floor, so kind of a live-work unit, to have someone be able to live there, as well as, you know, potentially, you know, work onsite or operate a business onsite. So in order to do that, on the mainland, there really is not another zone that allows mixed use. On the island, we do have the village mixed use that does allow this exact kind of development. But on the mainland, really, the only way to achieve that is through a planned development district, and so that's what she's applied to do here. So here is a survey of the property. There's Highway 41, 341, right here. And so she is proposing to do the building over here, and the large live oak is retained in the center of the site. And then this is just a copy of the planned development text that she's proposed, and that is in your packet. And the use is extremely limited to this exact use, so they would allow commercial on the ground floor and residential above. So there are not other uses that would be incorporated into this PD text. So it is very limited to what she is looking to do here on the site. And these are your possible actions, and staff's recommendation is to approve this or recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners. And Ms. Vonador is here tonight as the owner and applicant of the property. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Currently, that property has one, basically, single-wide drive in. Is that the only, is that the only planned entrance into and out of the, or exit out of the property?
Yes, sir. That is correct. That is the only planned entrance.
Okay. I'll save my other questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Steffi. Would the applicant please come forward and state your name?
Patricia Ann Vonador.
All right. What would you like us to do?
I'd like for you to approve it, actually. It's the first multi-use single in county on the mainland. It's low-impact. Actually, I have a double lane, sir. If you look at my DOT letter. She was already used as a dry lot, actually, by 341 during its expansion. So it actually has the commercial lot. It actually also has a stop sign already, and I actually have three oak trees I'm trying to retain there. That's the reason why I pushed the building back. That, and to keep, you know, some courtesy to the next-door residents across the road so that they won't see the business. But at the same time, I'd like to have a security light out there, just in case, you know. Trying to do business, you never know who might be kind of lurking around.
Sure, sure. All right. Questions for the applicant commissioners?
I have one.
Go ahead, sir.
Ms. Vonador, are you planning to put hives out there, or just sell the honey?
Well, I-
Is that your future, or... And if you did, where would you?
Actually, the hives could go to the right. I have not really played with that because I would have some consumers coming. So that means that if I did put hives, it would have to be all the way to the corner in the right-hand section to keep them separated from the actual customer who might decide to, you know, come and purchase something, hopefully. Right now, I've got them on the Little Satilla, off of Pinnock, and off of Old Jessup.
Okay. But your future plans are to, at some point?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Ms. Vonador, I'm glad to hear about the second entrance, because I live pretty close to that area, and I ride by it all the time. But I rode by today to pay particular attention to a couple of things. And you mentioned the three trees. I assume it's the big one in the middle?
Oh, yeah. That's my favorite one.
And then the other two, which would be facing your property on the right-hand side?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Okay. So your intentions are to save both of those, or all three of those trees?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You can't be a beekeeper unless you like to keep the trees and everything going.
Agreed, agreed. First of all, I'm going to vote to approve this. I like the mixed-use idea. But I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is there going to be additional property cleared? Okay. In looking at that, and I didn't get out and walk it, but in looking at that, there is a big hump in the middle of the property that I assume is septic.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And looking at the parking here, is there ample room to do that without putting that parking lot on top of the septic system?
Yes. I actually had Mr. Jim Conine, who was my surveyor, who did help with this whole project. He's already did the measurements to make sure that we can indeed turn and do what we needed to do within that area. I told him I felt better if we could just keep everything to the left. That way, we had the building and we had the parking. Everything would be central. And then it would leave the rest of the site to develop and put some hives and that kind of thing out there in that right-hand lane.
Okay.
And I am, I'm kind of like a horseshoe, as you can tell, where it's all woods. And actually, if you look at the topographical, that's really a really great location because it is a swampy area and it has natural water sources and all. In fact, I've actually captured a wild swarm out there previously, two summers ago. So I know that it's a great location.
Okay. The second driveway in, are you going to designate one for inbound and one for outbound?
Actually, the one going in, because it's already big enough to get double-traffic lane in.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir. And if you look at the DOT letter, they actually built that, and they said, they rechecked it, and they told me a thumbs up. In fact, the one coming out already has the stop sign. I left everything just as whenever DOT abandoned it, just like it was, and they have checked it and said, we're good to go.
My concern is traffic slowing down to enter and traffic coming out. There's no ingress or egress. And I live on Oak Grove Island, so the same thing, as you're coming down 341, you've got to make sure there's nobody coming up your behind.
Yeah, I understand. And that's usually what they said, the center lane. When I talked to DOT, they said that the center lane would be the de-acceleration for me. And I actually used it myself as a de-acceleration coming and going. And I put the chain up because I was having a large attractant there for folks selling drugs and other things. And so just to keep that, after I reported it to the policeman, I put that up as a stop-gap measure to keep that from being an attractant issue there.
Yes. But my concern was the traffic traveling east, trying to turn right into your property. That's where my concern is. Again, I like the idea. I will vote to approve, but that was just a question.
I'm not real sure exactly how much heavy traffic. I'm hoping that, we have a lot of local traffic, but I'm not sure that I'd have more than maybe one or two customers at any given time. And I think that I may have to rely a lot on internet cells to help carry it through.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Is, will there be a sign to advertise your business out there?
A very small one, which is what I told Stephanie. Yeah. I didn't want to have, you know, something that's massively lit up or whatever, but just a small sign out in front of the tree, so there's no disturbance, and just stating what- And just stating what the business is and see if I could get, you know, some business that way. I wasn't looking for some humongous billboard.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Edgy was speaking on, I don't know, it's up to you, but that eastbound traffic, rear-end accidents out there, I imagine they happen quite often. If the placement of that sign could be more before you get there, that way, people have a chance to decelerate instead of just slamming on brakes, you know, type of, uh... Just a suggestion, but I don't know if that's required or what.
Yeah, it was just going to be something small.
That can all be addressed in the site plan approval also. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing for ZM 4671. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition, please come to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this application, please do so. Hearing none, seeing none. This public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving ZM 4671, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. ZM 4672, 940 Canal Road Rezone. Request to rezone 1.559 acre portion of parcel 03-03354 at 940 Canal Road from Forest Agricultural Zoning District to General Commercial Zoning District in order to construct a new retail store. Taylor Graybill, Terramore Development Agent for John Newham, Idella Dozer Newham Revocable Trust Owner. Maurice?
All right, good evening. Maurice Postal Planning and Zoning. As the chairman said, the applicant is requesting to rezone this 1.6 acre portion of the overall 28-acre tract in order to construct a new $10,000 square foot Dollar General store. The eastern side of Canal Road is currently in the commercial, future land use category. And should the rezoning be approved, the applicant is planning on subdividing this 1.6 acres from the larger parent tract. And the county does not require any additional right-of-way for road widening in this section of Canal Road, so this parcel won't have the same kind of issues that parcels on the southern end of Canal have had. And here's the location on the overall tract. This is the Moon Doggies Plaza right here. And this is a survey showing the exact location of where the 1.6 acres will be chopped off should the rezoning be approved. And this is their layout plan showing the Dollar General right here and the parking and the future connection to Moon Doggies Plaza. And we are recommending approval of the application to the Board of Commissioners.
Maurice?
Yes.
I take it this is going to be a retail store?
Yes.
What, if any, impact is it going to have on hospice of the Golden Isles?
I'm not sure. I know that their staff has seen the application. They sent me an email, and I described what was going on, and I didn't receive any future comment from them. So I can't say exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff commissioners?
Maurice, and I could ask the owner, but I will ask you, since you already talked about that it adjoins the Moon Doggies Plaza. Is it going to adjoining as you can drive out of there and drive into that plaza? Or is it?
The county does have a requirement that adjoining commercial parcels are connected.
Okay.
So, as you can see, they did put that on their layout plan. They will still have to go through site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? Thank you, Maurice. Would the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Chris West. I'm a general counsel for Terramore Development and represent the applicant this evening. Happy to answer any questions you have of us.
Dollar General or Dollar Tree?
Dollar General. Yes, sir. That's an important distinction in our world.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the applicant commissioners? All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing for ZM 4671. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to this application, please come to the podium. Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support of this application, please do so.
I mean, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. And although I live on St. Simons, I have a second home at the dead end of Canal Road. I spent a lot of time on Canal Road. And I'm speaking in favor of this application and in the very strong hope that Dollar General and the local owner of this Dollar General store will have grocery items rather than a lot of convenience food and so on. There's already a convenience store immediately north of where this will be located. There is a shortage of grocery shopping in this part of the county and, other than the Sam's Club, which is a dreadful place to look for food because you have to pass through all the junk to get to the food. But that's another matter. So I'm hoping this will be a legitimate grocery store. I know that Dollar General has some upscale stores in other places where fresh fruit and vegetables, delicatessen meats, et cetera, are supplied. I hope that this will be it, will be the situation. And to address Commissioner Strickland's concern, there is a substantial amount of wooded area on the hospice land and a lot of wooded area between this 1.6 acre parcel and the canal. So I don't think there will be any disturbance of the hospice site by this building, particularly since the parking is to the south and west of where the hospice is. And I'm also glad that it will be easy to get from Moon Doggies, when I go to buy a pizza, to this place to pick up groceries, if there are legitimate groceries and not just canned goods and junk. So I support this application. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir. This probably will be an upscale Dollar General because it probably was the one going on St. Simons, so now they moved it to the mainland. So, just, anyway. Yes, sir. All right. All right, this, uh... Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Commissioner, I offer the motion that we approve ZM 4672 as is presented.
I second that. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify or raise your right hand. That is unanimous. ZM 4678 Coastal Tide Rezone. Request to amend the Planned Development District for property located at 7381 Golden Isles Parkway and 1 Coastal Pines Circle. Portions of parcel numbers 03-19479 and 0316518 to allow single-family and multifamily residential as allowed uses within the PD. Robert Civil Engineering Agent for Solid Rock Company, applicant in Fleming Forest Properties LLC, Wade &amp; Claire Incorporated owners.
Thank you. ZM 4678 Coastal Tide Rezone. And this is the former Coastal Pines Golf Course property. And so currently, this property is under another PD text, the PAWS property, which covered thousands of acres that a lot of you are pretty familiar with. So this is actually tract R7 under that PAWS Plan Development text. And what's currently allowed under that PD text for this property is, of course, golf course, which is what ended up getting developed there for many years and operated for many years. And then they also did allow single and multifamily residential at 10 units per acre. So basically, following the county's general residential zoning district. So primarily, the change that they're requesting is to increase that density. So currently, 10 units per acre is allowed on the site, and they are looking to increase that to 16 units per acre. And this is the property, it is a very large parcel that extends past this image, but it is basically this quadrant right here where the large star is located, is what they're looking to do. This is Highway 99 right here. This is the extension of Golden Isles Parkway. This is Sweetwater Boulevard in the Sweetwater neighborhood behind here. And then this is Gallery Way subdivision right here. And you did receive some, there were some public comments from some residents in Gallery Way that were included in your packet. And I believe there may be some residents here tonight that may make comment as well. So this is the existing Plan Development text, or the master plan that pertains to the property. So it's oriented a little funny, but this is actually Highway 99 right here. This is Golden Isles Parkway, and so where this arrow is, this is the R7 property. And this is the area that they're looking to increase the density. There are some wetlands in this area through here. This property right down here was part of another Plan Development Amendment that, so there's some commercial uses that are allowed per the PD right here. Of course, it's currently vacant. There hasn't been anything done there, but there is some commercial there. And then this is their proposed PD text amendment. So just to clarify, they are staying within the PAWS Plan Development, but just amending it to increase the density and this amendment that you had in your packet. And these are your possible actions. Staff is recommending approval of this. And Robert Civil Engineering are the agents for this applicant, and they're here this evening if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Is the county going to recommend that when this project starts to move forward, they're going to make the same recommendation for this project that they made for ZM 4680, that it have two entrances?
That has not come up with this project, specifically with this one, but...
I mean, if we're going to do it for one, then we need to do it for all.
Right.
I mean, we don't need to pick and choose which subdivisions we're going to require two entrances and, you know...
Right.
So...
Yeah, that'd definitely be, I mean, good planning. You know, it is required on the island to have the two entrances for over 25 units. Currently, we don't have that on the mainland, but when we've talked about the code updates, we've mentioned that definitely is something that we'd like to add in just because if you've got a downed power line or a tree in one entrance, it allows that emergency access through another entrance. It's definitely good planning to do that.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree. Okay. Any other questions for staff commissioners? Okay. Would the applicant please come forward?
Commissioners, I'm Brian Hunt with Robert Civil Engineering, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, questions?
I'm Sherri Gibbs. I have a question that has to do with the fact that this property was used as a golf course.
Yes, ma'am.
From its beginning. And I'm curious about environmental issues. If you have addressed or thinking about addressing environmental issues because of the chemicals that the golf course was treated with and perhaps the runoff into the lagoons and the lakes. Also, if there are any underground fuel sources or above-ground fuel sources that were used as the golf course was worked on with equipment.
Yes, ma'am. That's a very good question, actually. I have spoken with the developer, Mr. Moxley, who is here today. And he is, he has, he has agreed that he thinks that's a wonderful idea, that we should probably get some soil tests to see what is in that area. I do know the location of where this parcel sits is not, is not on where the facilities maintenance would have been and/or the buildings or the storage of those chemicals, but it's not to say that they weren't used on that area of the golf course. And yes, forgive me, this was before my time. I was asking some people around the office, like, what hole was that? And they couldn't quite remember what the hole number was in that corner. But they all were in agreement that it wasn't near the facilities maintenance. But what's on the remainder of the property is a great question. But Mr. Moxley was in agreement that we probably should get some soil tests just to see what all's in there so that we know ahead of time as the due diligence process continues, so that we have a full understanding of what's there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir. I have one, really, I think, for staff. Is the subdivision closest there, Gallery? What is the density for the homes in there? Is it 16 or 10 per acre? Or do we know?
I don't know. I could check on that. I believe it would be less than that, most likely. I mean, definitely under 10, but I can try to see if I can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing for ZM 4678. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come up to the podium and state your name.
My name is Ken Coda. I live at 149 Gallery Way, which is in that subdivision, the Coastal Pines subdivision. My concern is not with the development itself. My concern is with the drainage in that area. Presently, if you looked at a previous map that was up there, there is a pond, two ponds, actually, in that area. One is 1,400 feet long, runs parallel to the parkway. The drainage comes right by our east side of our subdivision. There's actually a water course that drains from the original golf course. In fact, it's right behind my house, crosses South 99 and continues on to wherever. When the hurricanes came through, we were flooded. And this was, at that time, I believe the golf course was closed. But the ponds were still there. We had two major areas. Some of the houses were right up to their first floors flooded. I have a map here I did on Google Earth, but you're not going to be able to see it. But like I say, if you look at the previous map that was up there, you'll see this one pond that's in there. Now, there is a wetlands area right there, but the water course comes down from north to south, crosses over Highway 99. So that's my major concern. Is the county doing any kind of a drainage study to find out how to relieve that problem? Again, I don't have anything wrong with developing homes and so on in there. It's just that something's got to be done with the drainage.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Come to the microphone, state your name, please, sir.
My name is Ray Gallant, and I live at 167 Sweetwater. My first question is, this was originally zoned for 10 units per acre? Is that what I heard earlier? And when was that zoned for 10 acres? Like, how long ago? Because this has been a golf course for years. Does anybody know?
Snap.
1999, at least.
1999.
Well, I have a problem with... Well, I have a problem with 16 units per acre. Since I live right on the golf course, the backside, which would have been hole number two, I live about three quarters of the way down Sweetwater. So my property is going to butt up to that property. So I really have a problem with looking at my back door and seeing this huge apartment building, since it's very nice and tranquil right now, and that's the reason why I actually purchased there. So that's my issue. 16 units per acre is quite a bit.
All right, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Julian Smith again. I've read through the many pages of documents, I think there are more than 70. How many dwelling units are actually proposed? Or is the total number of potential dwelling units stated anywhere in this application? No, you're not going to answer the question. To staff, no. I'm hoping there will be some discussion of that. I agree with the last gentleman that going from 10 units per acre to 16 units per acre seems a bit of an overreach. I don't think that's a good idea. And at your last meeting, you approved more than 500 units on the other side of 17 at New Hope. You have an application tonight that's going to cram, if you approve it, it's going to cram a lot more small lots into, next to a well-established neighborhood with larger lots. I mean, what is going on here? Is there a desperate need for tiny, modestly priced lots, or will these be modestly priced? So is there really a demand, other than on the part of applicants who want to borrow money from a bank, or who want to be able to put development rights in their piggy bank, so when conditions change and there's a greater demand for housing, then we can have some? What's going to happen with the school system if this is developed as fully as it can be, under the conditions that are proposed, when we don't know how many units are being talked about? So I'm hoping you will ask some hard questions and perhaps defer this matter until you can get some solid answers about what is actually going to happen here, or what could actually happen here. You need to anticipate what could happen and what the impact of this is going to be. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you used to represent this part of the county. So I think you know what is going on here or could be going on here. And if this was not your old district, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Bronwyn Smith, and I live on Sweetwater at 169 Sweetwater Boulevard, about one and a half from the end in the top-left corner. I moved there. I bought my home, had it built. I'm an educator. I'll be retiring soon, in hopes of retiring in a nice, quiet, nice neighborhood. It is a subdivision, but our homes are adequately spaced apart. It's a quiet place. 16 times 50 acres is going to put a lot of houses behind me. I'm concerned about looking out back, and if it's apartment buildings, they're going to be looking right down on me in my pool or in my yard. Is there going to be any type of barrier set up between Sweetwater subdivision and this subdivision? And what about our property value with all these units coming in? I don't know how this works. Do you unite?
No, ma'am. We don't debate with you. You just get up and state your position, and then the applicant will come back up, and hopefully, he'll answer some of the questions that have been raised.
Okay. I didn't mean that rude. I've never done this. I've always lived in the country till I moved here. So we didn't have these type of problems.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please come to the microphone.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Peter Jones. I live at 119 Gallery Way, and that would be on the east point, where it's pointing right at the back of my house. I really don't have an issue with building a subdivision, because the way Brunswick is growing, yeah, we need housing. I have a major issue with 16 units per acre. That's a set of pup tents. It's just a little, I think 10 would be perfect. I mean, in the whole area, that would just complement the area rather than putting a skyscraper condo apartment complex in the middle of us. And the other issue of concern that I have, besides the flooding issue that we would face down in Gallery Way, we don't want to become the Gallery Swamp. We still want to stay Gallery Way. The issue I have is, up in the developed area, or the planned area, there's one, two, three lakes that are there, ponds, lakes. Question I would have, is the plan to fill them in? Is the plan to clean them up and use them as, you know, part of the property is, you know, dressing up the property with the side benefit of saying that's a retention pond for excessive rain or flooding, you know, to get the water out? And does the county plan to actually put in culverts or something in there to get the water out of us? Because right now, even before the development starts, heavy rains, we have flooding, excessive flooding into there. Our streets are usually underwater there. But like I said, once again, one of my major concerns is the 16 unit per acre. I think 10 is a better number for what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Would the applicant please come back up and see if he can address some of the issues that these fine folks have raised?
Yes. So with regards to drainage, I live at 236 Victorian Lake Drive, which is directly across the street, right here. I have a brand-new house, two years old, and I will concur, there is drainage issues in this area. There is severe drainage issues. If it rains just a little too much, I can't get in my subdivision. I mean, I can't. I've got a car big enough to get in. The unfortunate part is that all of our infrastructure on our side of the road is private. So this all falls back on the developer who developed that, you know, from years ago. It was an old subdivision, like 10 years old, and then another developer came in and built like 10 houses in there, which were in the past few years, and that's one of the houses that I got. But we're still dealing with infrastructure that was done by somebody else years ago. In doing what I do, I get the fortunate, or sometimes unfortunate job of getting to do drainage and drainage analysis. And Glen County is very, Glen County's very strict on what we do with development and drainage. Like, we have to meet pre-post. We have to be able to account for water that comes onto the property. We have to be able to detain it, and then we can hold it, and then we can't release any more than what it was before it was developed. So with regards to drainage, there is nothing that Solid Rock's going to do that's going to cause any adverse effects to drainage, but they're already there. They do already exist. Whether it was bad development, county's fault, whose responsibility is that now, I'm not sure. But I do know that the design that we put forward, if this is rezoned, would not cause any more drainage issues that are already there, because we will account up for 100% of our water that's on there.
How about the density?
Mr. Moxley?
What is your question?
The density? The people have raised about 16 units per acre.
I can get more detail, Mr. Moxley. If we tell you 10 units per acre, will you do your development, or just say, I can't? Financially, it won't work. Do you need 16?
We do.
And if we tell you 10, you're not going to do it?
Most likely not.
Yes, that's what I figured.
I've not closed the dirt yet, and a contingency of my contract is getting diszoned tonight.
Yes, sir.
How about the issue the gentleman, I think the last gentleman, raised about the lakes, or the ponds, or whatever that's...
We intend to use the ponds, modify them to the best we can.
As an amenity to the property?
As an amenity to the property, yes. Those are nice lakes out there. Ponds are expensive to dig as well. So, you know, you obviously want to keep as much of that as you can. But through the design phase, which is the next part of this, we're going to come up with a design that's going to be most beneficial. All 50 acres is not going to have 16 units per acre. That's going to set on that, just because roads, infrastructure, buffers, setbacks, all the stuff that we have to account for, drainage, detention, it's not going to be realistic. But with the land that is left that's within there, obviously, we would want to utilize that to the best of our ability to maximize whatever the cost for the infrastructure and the development to be. And I've spoken with Richard McKenna. You guys know Richard. I'm sure he's a big landowner out that way. And he tells me that that area is the highest plain above flood in all of Glen County. If there's drainage issues and other developments around it, it was because of poor design. It would have nothing to do with this development.
Any other questions?
I would like to ask one other question. I know that this is for single-family and multifamily use, the proposed text. Can you give us any idea, I know when a site plan comes through, it's going to be a different thing, but do you have any idea at this point in time to maybe address this question that these people ask? What of that is going to be multifamily and what's going to be single-family?
I can't disclose that just yet. We had some pretty tough negotiations with the owner, Ms. Claire. We were able to convince her to sell us a piece of this property. We didn't necessarily want all of it.
Right.
But our intention is to develop it at 16 units per acre, a good portion of it. Our idea right now is to do a single-family residential for rents.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moxley, one more question. Between Stillwater and your development, your proposed development, will you have a sufficient buffer there?
I think a buffer already exists there. I'm not sure about the boundaries there, but there's a, and correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there a tall tree line behind?
No, sir, not all of them. I have no trees. It's not required to have trees.
We'll make sure that we don't, we're friendly to the community. You know, I can't guarantee you what kind of buffer we'd do tonight, but we'll take everybody into consideration for sure. We've been down here for a long time developing and tend to be here for a lot longer.
Absolutely. And you the kind of developer we want in this area.
Thank you for saying so, ma'am.
Mr. Moxley, I understand that you're looking to buy this property, that you don't currently own the property.
That is correct.
Your decision to do or not to do can't be based on tonight's ruling, because you haven't even submitted a site plan. I would assume that you would wait until site plan approval before you make that final call.
You would be mistaken on that.
Okay, all right.
We're not going to close this deal without getting the zoning that we want.
Okay, all right.
It's a contingency of the contract.
So the density that we're, that everybody's concerned about can be addressed during site plan submittal. I wonder if it's worth taking it forward at an approved 10 per acre and revisiting this thing once everybody has a site plan they can review?
I don't think that's fair to the current property owner nor to me.
I agree with you. I'm trying to make everybody happy here, so...
Yeah. We felt like this was a great property. We developed the Enclave apartment complex on Glen Cove back a couple of years ago. Turned out to be a great project. We're not currently planning on doing high-rise. We're looking to do single-story, single-family is what we're looking to do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Jeffy, I have a question. I just can't remember. When we approved the development at New Hope, it was for 16 units per acre, right? And the Board of Commissioners reduced it to 10. Is that not what happened?
Yes, sir. That is correct. Yeah, staff had recommended the 10 units per acre, but the applicant was asking for 16.
Right.
And the county commissioner was okay with 16.
The county commissioner did it with 10.
And then, yeah, the board reduced it to 10, meaning it's per acre. Correct.
Okay, all right.
So I have two questions for staff. So in the documents we provided, Planning and Zoning says that a future land use map application is requested. I don't see that on our agenda. Don't want Mr. Moxley to have to come back. Why are we not doing that?
Yeah, is that in the review comments? Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we did look at that. There's been some discussions about how we're kind of handling the future land use maps with rezone applications. So in this application, we did initially tell them that they needed this, and then we kind of revisited that and said we do not need to have that and come forward. So we're looking at how we're kind of handling those right now. So that's why you're not seeing any of those. So basically, what we've looked at is if the project is similar to what the land use map is saying, and that may not be something that you may see along with your rezone. So like I said, we're kind of looking at how we're handling that right now, but that's why you don't see that.
And one more question that maybe will help the public. So on the New Hope parcel, the staff recommended only 10. Why are y'all, what are the conditions that now you're comfortable with 16 on this one? Because that might just be helpful to the public to hear.
Sure. Yeah, so with New Hope, what we looked at there was everything surrounding there was very low density. I think here, you know, you see some commercial that is our, some properties already zoned commercial. This is already zoned, you know, for some multifamily at 10 units. So what we looked at here was that there was, you know, some more density than what we saw at New Hope. So staff looked at New Hope. It was very, very low density. You know, you have a state park and historic site next to it. Additionally, there were no utilities extended there. It was going to be on, you know, private water, there was a water tower as well as, you know, onsite sewage. So just there was certain elements that really, to me, New Hope was much more rural property, that that higher density was not appropriate at that location versus here. It feels more appropriate. Okay, thank you. Sure.
Do you know what, any of the other subdivisions that are out there surrounding that, what the density is?
Right. Yeah, I know that question came up earlier. I did take a look at Gallery Way. So that is a 30-lot subdivision, and they're on about nine acres. So that's at about 3 1/2 units per acre, so quite a bit below that 10 units per acre that's currently zoned. I didn't get a chance to, Sweetwater's a bigger subdivision, and so I wasn't able to look at all of that one. So but at least Gallery Way, we know it's about 3 1/2 units per acre.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moxley, I know you mentioned there's a lot of infrastructure, roads and different things. Ponds will take up part of the acreage. And you did mention, and I noticed the site plan, single stories all you're looking at right now, and you're...
That's what we're looking to do.
Okay.
But we don't want to be, have our hands tied.
Oh, I understand. I understand. But I'm just trying to, the residents here and for myself, you've got to have an idea when you throw out the 16 per acre of what you feel comfortable with doing. Is it going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, and I'm just throwing these numbers out. You tell me if I'm off base. But I'm just trying to, because density is important to me, you know, for the surrounding neighborhoods as well as yourself. And I know there's got to be a number that you're maybe looking at, a ballpark that you maybe could get us, you know?
Not necessarily. We're buying a bigger parcel than we necessarily wanted.
Yes, sir.
I suspect this is probably a five- to seven-year development.
Okay.
Incidentally, I'm very familiar with all of the subdivisions out this area. Me with the subdivision that Brian lives in, the gallery, Sweetwater. Sweetwater went into receivership, and Richard McKenna now owns it. Gallery, a friend of mine developed that. Took him years and years to get rid of the lots at discounted prices. The subdivision he lived in went into receivership as well. And we're finally getting to a place in Glen County where development is demanded again.
Yes, sir.
We're developing 142 lots out on Hare Driggers and the Carers Gate development right now. That's the nicer, higher... That's the nicer, higher-end homes. We're very conscientious about the needs and the demands in this community, and we feel like this is a great piece for us to go to. And somebody mentioned earlier, I think it was Mr. Putty Smith, is there a demand for lower inter-level homes? Read your paper. Every day, there's an article in the paper, a demand for lower-priced homes. And when material prices slap out the roof right now, it's going to take some creative thinking in order to provide inter-level homes. Inter-level homes in Glen County, unless you're buying existing homes right now, you're looking two-hundred fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars, inter-level. And we're trying to accommodate that market.
I appreciate that. I just, you know, we've got a standard with the other subdivisions in the area. You know, a standard arc.
Obviously, Lake's apartment complex, two-hundred and thirty-three, I think it's over three hundred units actually, is a half a mile from this side. I understand there's another multifamily development coming closer to ninety-five from this side. It's a great area, Glen County, as far as the, in my estimation, in the next ten years, if things don't go awry, I think that area will be the next big development boom in Glen County. Just because there's not much good land left. And again, repeating myself, it's my understanding that area out there is the highest elevation above flood or above sea level in the whole county. Readdressing the drainage issues. If there's drainage issues in the Gallery or some of these other subdivisions out there, it was design issues.
Yeah, well, we don't want to compound a already problem out there, so, you know.
So, what do you do? Just not allow development?
No, sir, I'm not saying that. Just, you know, you've got people with investment, that's all.
We've got the best engineer firm in Glen County on our team.
I got you.
I assure you that we're going to do something nice and we're going to do it right.
All right, sir. Thank you.
The project we're putting in out of?
Any other questions?
Mr. Moxley, the enclave that you developed, what was the density there?
Sixteen units per acre.
Sixteen. And across, again, I know you just said it, but across the street, across the Odyssey?
Odyssey Lake, sixteen units per acre.
Sixteen acre, sixteen, okay.
It's a common density for apartment type projects.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you. All right, commissioners. We can't sit here all night.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass ZM four-six-seven-eight at the recommended approval for the staff.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving ZM forty-six seventy-eight as presented, sign if I've raised your right hand. That is unanimous. All right, ZM forty-six eighty-seven twenty-five, Harry Driggers Boulevard rezoned. Request to amend an existing planned development district. ZM thirty-seven eighty-five at seven twenty-five Harry Driggers Boulevard, parcel zero-three dash one-five-seven-three-nine, to revise the minimum required lot width for single-family residential lots from sixty to fifty. The minimum required area for a single-family residential lot is remaining six thousand square feet. So, there will be not an increase in density. The applicant is not proposing a change in permitted uses. Frank Wesley Franks, Roberts Civil Engineering, agent for RLF Kingsland Properties LLC owner.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, it's Maurice Postle, Planning and Zoning. As the chairman stated, the applicant is requesting to reduce the required lot width for single-family lots on this parcel only from sixty feet to fifty feet and this parcel is within the Golden Isles Gateway P.O.S.P.D. Also, as stated, the minimum required lot area for single-family homes will remain unchanged at six thousand square feet. And the practical result of this rezoning request is that future developers will have the option of creating six thousand square foot lots with dimensions of fifty by one-twenty instead of sixty by a hundred. Single-family residential development has been a permitted use on this property since at least nineteen ninety-four, when the first version of the Golden Isles Gateway P.D. was approved by the B.O.C. Single-family homes on six thousand square foot lots has been a permitted use since ninety-nine, when the current version of the Golden Isles Gateways P.O.S.P.D. was enacted. And surface mining will remain a permitted use on the specific eighty-six acre of the parcel approved by the B.O.C. in two thousand eighteen. The surface mining use will continue until the current DNR permit expires. And this is the four hundred forty-two acre parcel. This is Carriage Gate right here. This is Shell Point, and this is the elementary school. And this is just a map of proposed future development. The most current proposed development is an eighty-acre subdivision right here joining Carriage Gate. And of course, there's this three-hundred-something acre remainder. And this is a concept plan for the Brookwood subdivision. Will be eighty acres, two hundred seventy-nine single-family lots, and the six, most of the six hundred, I mean, six thousand square foot lots will be the fifty by one-twenty lots. And of course, as we know in this area, residents have spoken to in the past in previous rezonings and public hearings, there's the issue of the four-laning of Harry Driggers Road, and the Community Development Department has been directed by the B.O.C. to make plans and keep that in mind. And the current right-of-way width south of the parcel is a hundred feet. County engineering has determined that four-laning Harry Driggers will require an additional twenty-five feet on either side for a hundred fifty-foot right-of-way. And the county is requesting that the current property owner convey twenty-five feet of property north of the property line on Harry Driggers to accommodate a planned future four-laning. And that request would be a total area of one-point-eight-seven-five acres out of the four hundred forty-two acre parcel. And just as a matter of comparison, the section of Harry Driggers, right next to Bible Baptist, is currently a hundred sixty-five foot wide. At Needwood, it's a hundred fifty feet wide. And then, from there, it's pretty steadily a hundred all the way to Highway seventeen. Right opposite the project site, it's a hundred feet wide. And interestingly, Shell Point has built in in their plating thirty-foot of common area adjacent to Harry Driggers Road to accommodate future right-of-way expansion. And another issue is the subdivision access. That was brought up on the previous rezoning case. In the interest of public safety, we're asking that all future developers on this parcel have two access points for any subdivision of twenty-five lots or greater, similar to what the code currently requires on St. Simons. And we are recommending approval with the two conditions.
Any questions for staff, commissioners? Thank you, Maurice.
Can you go back, back one more, I think?
Sure.
Sure, okay. All right, thanks.
Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to, again, see compared to the whole track, where, if they had dual entrances, where that would be. But I assume you're saying that would need to be in the next development phase? They'd need to connect and have different entrances?
There actually is a stubout in Carriage Gate. I can't remember exactly, somewhere in this area. So, they could have one access point directly under Harry Driggers, and then the second one would be the stubout. Plus, it could also be gated. We're not requiring that both accesses be open to the public. One could be gated and only for emergency use.
Yeah, Carriage Gate would probably appreciate that since they're gated.
Any other questions?
But Maurice, let's say, you're saying the stubout in Carriage Gate, but that is for Carriage Gate, is that correct? Or it?
Well, I mean, it is Carriage Gate property. They would have to, yes, there would have to be some kind of agreement.
There would have to be an agreement. So, let's say there isn't an agreement.
Right.
Where on that little track of property are there going to be two access points?
There would either have to be one here, or, I mean, there is the existing road right now that goes straight out to seventeen. So, that would work for emergency use. And of course?
You mean across the big parcel that's not developed?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Or they could choose two right on Harry Driggers.
But I, I would be skeptical of using that road. That's a logging road more than anything else. That's where the, you know, let's get down to it.
Yeah.
It's a bar pit that they're hauling dirt out of all over the county. And so, I wouldn't want to count that as a entrance.
Sure, one would hope they could come to an agreement with Carriage Gate for the second entrance.
Yeah, if they don't, they may have to come up with something else.
Right, they could do two on Harry Driggers.
Right.
As we know, they're probably, this area here is going to be developed in the future.
So, Maurice, we have, since I've been here, we've never asked for two, for two in a subdivision. Why now?
We are asking the current property owner and future developers to help us be proactive about this public safety issue. And the truth is, the fire department reached out to me today and said that the International Fire Code actually does require two entrances for subdivisions of thirty lots or greater. And they will be enforcing that from now on. I don't know why they haven't in the past. But, so that will apply to the mainland as well as the requirements for St. Simons.
Hopefully, when we go through the ordinance rewrites, this will be included in it. It should have been done originally when the Board of Commissioners passed it several years ago, which I was then a member.
Sure.
And we only made it applicable to the St. Simons, but it should have been for all of Glen County. Because it certainly is a safety issue.
Right.
Because of natural, natural causes, power lines, accidents, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, I agree.
There needs to be.
Right, I live in a subdivision on the mainland only has one entrance. You know, God knows that will happen during a hurricane.
Yep. Any other questions for Maurice?
Maurice, both entrances can get blocked.
I agree.
Do y'all realize the problems you create for development when you place burdens like this on developers? Ninety-five percent of all the subdivisions in Glen County have one entrance.
That don't make it right.
I understand that.
That don't make it right.
But we don't have any issues. We have hurricanes very, it's an act of God. A tree can fall across my road tomorrow and I can't get out.
I agree with that, but there's a greater chance that one will remain open.
So, I, you go. So, we just did an amendment to a planned development where you didn't ask for two entrances. And now, we are asking for two entrances. And I'll just, I just want to say the same thing. I know it's sort of what he said, is that every time we arbitrarily decide to add something or not add something, I mean, we do, to answer Mr. Smith's, we have a crisis of affordable housing in our market. Our workforce can't live here. A lot of them have to go to other counties. And it just, you know, this is obviously based on the lot size, is probably going to be pretty at the lower spectrum of costs for out in that area of houses. And so, now we're saying this one has to have two, even though the code doesn't, our ordinances don't say it. But we just approved one that didn't. And at a higher density that didn't. So, I'm just conflicted. What kind of makes this one where you're asking for it and the last one where you weren't?
I understand your point. But the truth is, the fire department will be enforcing two entrances in preliminary plats from now on, including subdivisions on the mainland.
There's places that can be development that can't have two entrances.
Well, they'll have to discuss that with the fire department. That's all I can say.
All right, Maurice, thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right, applicant?
Commissioners, Brian Hunt with Roberts Civil Engineering again. So, with regards to the twenty-five foot that's along Harry Driggers, I don't think that's really an issue. I mean, I think if county wants it, they're going to four-lane that road. Whether we design around it now or design around it later, they're going to get that twenty-five foot. And I think that the county and the owner can come to an agreement with that. However that is, that's going to be not really an issue. With regards to the two entrances, don't really have an issue with it. I think that we could be able to accommodate something in there, either a gravel path. I know that our communication with Carriage Gate is, it's not going to come through Carriage Gate. It's, that is a private subdivision, private roads and gated community, and it's not going to allow, they're not going to allow for it. So, we can come up with something else that would probably be able to work. Just as a statement, just with regards to that, I think that our, my biggest objection to it is that it's not in zoning and that it is not part of what an owner and a developer, when they look at a piece of property they're looking to purchase, the only thing that they have to go on are what's written in the zoning when they start laying out development. So, if it's not part of zoning, then it gets thrown in at the last second. And we were notified of this this morning, that this was the condition that they're going to put on it. So, fortunately for us, the owner is pretty, pretty easy to work with and it's not a big deal. This property is pretty unique in how it's laid out, that it does make it difficult for two entrances. And then, we run into other issues with regards to, if it was going to be a paved entrance, to how the distance that that needs to be apart. And as far as safety goes, the more curb cuts you put on a road, the less safe it is. We just talked about it earlier with a reason, with a site plan that you said that if they were going to put a sign up, put it way back so that when the people start stopping, well, if we have multiple entrances and people are starting and stopping, especially on Harry Driggers, it would add even more traffic issues versus the random tree that may fall and/or electrical line that may fall. And with regards to the International Fire Code, are we going to enforce everything in the International Fire Code here in Glen County or just that one portion of it? And are we going to do it only on certain subdivisions and not other subdivisions? And if this is something that is a public safety issue, then we're okay with designing around it, but we just urge the commissioners to go ahead and get that zoning ordinance changed so that it can be then approved and put forward.
We understand that is part of the rewrite of the ordinances. But it's just been put on hold for obvious reasons over the last year. Eventually, sometime this year or at least early next year, we plan to have it finished. And that will be part of the rewrite of the ordinances once it's in there to comply with whatever statutes we need to.
No, and again, I'm not for or against the two entrances. I think that we just want to be able to know what this is in the design and implementation phase. And we understand that it's coming, and we're not opposed to it coming. But for this guy who's buying this land right now, that this was never an issue ever before and anywhere in Glen County, that this was, it's hard for him to now, oh, and by the way, oh, it's not in zoning, but you're going to have to do this. But it's just because we were told that maybe it might come down the road. But the fire department is now going to enforce this. That's not part of the zoning. And, but I don't know what else they're going to throw at us down the road. So, we're just going to have to plan. How do you budget for that? There's no way to budget at all for things that could possibly or maybe. So, my recommendation is that, or what I would ask, is that this not be part of the rezoning. This is something that should be done during the preliminary plat and/or site planning and/or final plat phase of this. I understand that the commissioners here won't see the preliminary plat, and I understand that. But it does get a shot at the final plat. The B.O.C. does get to approve and/or reject it. And with regards to the International Fire Code, I don't think this would be an issue on this project. I think we're going to go ahead and just go ahead and design around it. But just as, it should not be contingent upon the rezoning. I don't think this rezoning should be contingent upon those two things. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition to this? Please come up to the microphone, ma'am. Who would you have?
She looks like she just came up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Victoria Fennel. I live in Carriage Gate. I have several concerns about this development of this subdivision. When we came to the meetings in twenty eighteen, we came here and there was discussion about When, we came to the meetings in 2018, we came here and there was discussion about the surface mining that was going to take place on all of the acreage that's back behind Carriage Gate. And one of the things that was placed in the document from 2018 said, "The ultimate use of the parcel will be a residential subdivision similar to others along Harry Driggers Boulevard." So in looking at that and in looking at this map, it's very hard for you to see, but to the left, those little grayed areas are the lots in Carriage Gate. And if you can look at it closely, you see that there are many more lots that are being proposed for this subdivision than there are in Carriage Gate as far as the width of them. I took the opportunity to print from the GIS several of the different subdivisions that are along Carriage Gate, and I'm not finding any that have the widths of only 50 or 60 feet. If you look at Country Walk and you look at what the average is there, it is not 50 to 60, nor Eagle Crest, nor Shell Point, nor Shadow Lake, nor Southern Landing, nor Carriage Gate. So I'm concerned because in 2018, when this was first proposed, what was stated in here was that it would be a subdivision that would be built similar to others that are along the Harry Driggers Boulevard. So that is my big concern. There are, and the map moved. I must have touched it, I'm sorry. So my request would be that it be similar to the other subdivisions along Harry Driggers Boulevard as far as the width of those lots. Also, I have a concern about the use of that other road that they were talking about as the second point of access, because I thought that was a temporary road that was done that the DNR had to approve or somebody about the wetlands. It was, it was only temporary while they were doing the surface mining, so I'm not sure that that's even a permanent road. They're going to have, if they have to do a second point of access, they're going to have to figure something else out if, if that is true. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Julian Smith again. If I heard correctly, the, the agent representing the developer said he heard only this morning, they heard only this morning, that there would be a requirement for two points of access. Did I hear correctly?
Yes, sir. That's what he said.
Yes? This information was available on the staff report that was posted online last week. And if the county staff did not inform the applicant in plenty of time that this was going to be a requirement, then I sympathize with the applicant, the agent for the applicant, but I'm still going to oppose your recommending approval of this. If you look at the plan for these 200 and, what, 279 lots, the last person to speak in opposition, a neighbor, pointed out, and I'll point out again, that all of the lots in Carriage Gate are much larger than these little 60,000 square foot lots. This, what is happening here is, if this was still being developed by Harry Driggers, it would be a bait and switch operation. But Harry Driggers company sold this land to speculators. So there is no bait and switch, but only to the extent that when the people who, who bought these large, expensive lots in Carriage Gate and Country Walk and Eagle Crest and so on bought theirs, they didn't know that eventually the county commission and the planning board, planning commission were going to be asked to cram in small lots. And I sympathize with the statement that there is a shortage of affordable housing in Glen County. And a lot of it's going to disappear because so much property that could have been affordable is being bought by outside, non-residents to, to rent on short-term basis. That happens a lot on St. Simons, and I think it's going to be happening here on the mainland as St. Simons gets more and more crowded. Now, going back to the matter of two points of access, if I read this design carefully, there's a two, there's a one-lane road coming in and a one-lane road coming out. I hope at least that the exit from this is going to be two lanes, so there can be a left-turn lane and a right-turn lane. And that's a lot of people to come out onto Harry Driggers Boulevard. And why is Harry Driggers Boulevard going to be four-laned? Because there's more and more and more traffic, because there's more and more and more development heading across Harry Driggers to Highway 17. So I hope you will not recommend this to the, the county commission. One final point, if you look at the last document in your packet, you will see that this land is only about a third or a quarter of the land owned by RLF between there and the east to 17. We're not told, and you're not told, what is going to happen with all of that land? Is there going to be another development of small lots like this one immediately to the east? We don't know. And this strikes me as a premature development. Yes, we may need more housing, affordable housing in Glen County, but that's because we're driving ordinary, working people out of Glen County. Almost every one of our.
Mr. Smith.
Trailer parks is going to be turned into something else. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm Sam Self. I agree with Mr. Smith and Dr. Fennel, and I would like to ask y'all to deny the motion to reduce it from 60 to 50 feet, partly because the existing, and we're going to be right back to back, you know? We're going to have like two or three houses right in our backyard as it is, pretty much everybody there. And also, I live at, next to the lake there, we'll be able to see actually 15 houses out of our back window there, so there's quite a big difference there. Other thing I'd like to ask is, they at least leave a tree buffer there, too, so that would help a lot. And as far as having a second entrance going into Carriage Gate, since it's a gated community, the residents will not be happy about that, so thank you. If y'all would consider, you know, 60 feet's bad enough, 50 feet's a lot worse, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Ma'am?
Did you want to speak?
I guess so. I'm going to put a different hat on right now.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir. I guess so. I'm going to put a different hat on right now. Actually, I'm ready. My little sec, property management hat, please, sir.
And it is Patricia Varnador, and I absolutely believe in the low-income housing situation in this community, and it's happening in other communities as well. Savannah will have one-half a million by the time we get to seven years from now, right now, sir. And your population cannot be afford to be driven out to the other counties and have to drive in to service this community. We actually do need this low-income housing, and we actually need more of it. You know, if you've checked the property prices right now, what used to be built for 10 houses is the same budget now for two houses. So I just want you to take into consideration that expansion in this community is needed. There is not that much property that is left that is developable for housing. A lot of it is wetlands. And actually, Harry Driggers did do a lot of disservice to this community because he was allowed to build on things that were wetland, and that's the reason why we're having so much drainage issues. If this property is able to be developed, and if we don't have drainage issues, then I think that we should put forward every effort to accommodate this population. And I tell you, I travel throughout the communities and throughout the counties, several, actually. I go all the way to Blackshear, Georgia, and I go up to Little Wissy, and I go down to Camden as a property manager. And I can tell you, if you look, there is no place within those communities either to absorb any of the overflow from this county. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Commissioners? Did the applicant want to come out and readdress anything real quick?
Yes, I, I, I would. I'm sorry, commissioners, I know y'all are having a long night, and I do appreciate your time.
That's what we get paid the big bucks for.
I know, I understand. Just for clarity, the, the lot size is not changing, just the lot width. And we keep talking about low-income housing. I moved here three years ago, and I bought the house on the lowest end of the totem pole. I just showed you where it was at. It was $200,000, which was a lot. My wife is a teacher, and I'm a new employee at a new company, that I promise you, I wasn't making a lot of money. But our house, it being on the lowest end of the spectrum right now, that our house, a realtor came, we were looking to sell to buy inside of Carriage Gate in the new development, not the, not the, not the new new one inside, but just into some of those new houses that were popping up. And our house, our realtor told us they was going to sell it for $260,000. I could have sold it, and she said they'd have it sold in one week. That is low-income housing. I can promise you, you will not find a house in there that's going to be $260,000. They're going to be much more than that. All they're asking for is the lot width to change, 6,000 square foot still going to remain. And even if this is not approved, they can come back with, without having any zoning amendment or any changes, build 6,000 square foot lot, houses in there, and they could probably cram just as many, just being a little more diligent on how they lay it out. I understand Carriage Gate was, was designed with much larger lot sizes, but today's day and environment, you're, you can't, you can't, we can't do 12,000 or 20,000 square foot lots. There's not a developer anywhere that would do that outside of an individual person buying a lot and doing it themselves.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question, sir. You said earlier most would be 50-foot wide. I think I heard that.
So I think that that's the, that would be the minimum lot width. I mean, in some of them, there's going to be much more than that. Some of them would be no less than 50-foot. That's the, that is the requirement. All of them will have a minimum of 6,000 square feet.
Okay. And I'm maybe looking out in the future or whatever, but, you know, that's a lot of lots in a very tight area. The blue area, is that green space or is that little?
That would be detention ponds.
Detention ponds? Okay. So no real green space, other than maybe a tree in the front yard? My other concern is, and, you know, we have, we need affordable housing, everybody knows that, we do need that. But you go to have a lot that's 50-foot wide, and I'm not sure exactly if the home's going to be 30-foot, 30-foot wide, 40-foot wide, but you have someone buy that, and their children want a trampoline or a, the wife may want a she shed in the back, whatever. You go to play the dickens getting those resold. I think it'll serve a purpose early on, but I think one of the problems in Glen County, we look at things right now knee-jerk reaction, and I just believe that that could be an issue going forward. That's my only concern with the 50-foot is folks are going to be, and they're pretty tight. And how much buffer is there going to be between the folks to the left?
The Carriage Gate and the CDG.
Carriage Gate, how much?
Yes, sir. So this is just, this layout, this is, is not, this is not like the final layout, obviously, as they're looking to develop this. That's right. This would be done through site planning. This is Landmark 24 as well. They've done several subdivisions in this area, and they have a very good home that they put on it. I don't think I've seen a home that's been, nothing that, I haven't seen a home that I wouldn't be willing to buy. They've all done a really good job with it. With the, with the lot width and whether or not they can resell it, you know, that's, that's outside of our realm. You know, that's for landmark to, they feel like that they've got a pretty good, pretty good market for what they're going to be able to develop, and I have to trust that they, the viability to them, whether or not these projects will be able to continue. But I have full faith that they're going to be able to do it. They've done it successfully here in Glen County and several other places.
All right. Thank you.
I would like to say that I do have a concern myself, changing the lot size from 60 feet to 50 feet. And I'm in total agreement with the residents from Carriage Gate. I think that's, that would just be out of the norm for that area. It would, the houses that you would have to put on a 50-foot wide lot, I think, would just be totally different in, in looks than what's in that area. I live out in that area myself, and I think that would just kind of be a negative. And I'm not in agreement with changing from the 60 to 50-foot for that reason.
Anyone else?
I have a question for our county attorney. Yeah?
He's there.
So if part of this approval, if we do say they've got to give the right-of-way for the widening of Harry Driggers, will they be compensated by the county for that property?
Nope.
If you take it in eminent domain, will they be compensated?
Nope.
If the county took it by eminent domain, it would be, but you would not need to do that to require a second entrance.
No, I'm talking about widening Harry Driggers. So in this approval, they want us to have them agree to give over an acre of land for the widening. Will they be compensated for that?
They would not.
But if you have to go through a process, they would.
So that's just a requirement to get into rezoning. As a condition of the rezoning, you're requiring them to provide the extra space. Alternatively, the applicants could say, no, I don't want to do that, I'm going to stay where I am with the PD as it is. So that's just a condition to make it palatable to the county if it goes forward with that land acquisition for the county.
So, but they're not changing density. So why is that a, I mean, I get why the county needs it, that it needs to be four-laned, but just at this point in time, they're going to have to give acreage to the county just because they want to change lot widths, not density. I mean, that's, to me, that's a kind of scary thing for a property owner, that just because you're making a, not even a density change, that the county say, you know, yeah, you can, but you got to give us some property without compensation.
So I'll defer to the, to the planning and zoning for what is recommended and why, but as to whether or not it's compensated by the county, no, it's not. And historically, we have not compensated property owners for those kind of conditional property conveyances.
So, and, but if we don't approve that condition and the commission doesn't approve, which I have no idea what the commission will do, then, then there would be a different process for, if, if the rezoning went through without that, then the county would have to go through the normal way of doing things to get that additional footage.
That's correct.
And then I have another question, just in curiosity, because I don't know Carriage Gate, what the future, are there unplatted future phases of Carriage Gate?
Yes.
So will they be required to do a second entrance?
If they come in for preliminary plating, then yes. Like I said, under what the fire department told me today, with them enforcing, strictly enforcing that provision of the fire code, then yes, anything from now on that comes in for preliminary plat would be required to have a second entrance.
Anybody else, folks?
Do I understand, not, not for you, but for you, do I understand you to say that you don't have a problem with the 25-foot to, for the widening of Harry Driggers? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I think that that's, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I know for specifically this 1,000-foot section of it is not an issue at all. There is. There is a much larger development that's part of this track that is still in RLF's hands, and that's not, I haven't seen any design or anything with it. That's why I feel that we're a little, we're a little early on this trying to decide the 25-foot, the two-access. We still, we've not even started to tackle the design phase of it yet. And secondly, with the, with the Harry Driggers and the widening is, like, I haven't seen plans on it, do they need the full 25-foot, or do they just really need 12-foot? Or is, what's the, you know, do we have design plans for the Harry Driggers? Is there, you know, has anybody done the preliminary surveys and tried to lay out what it's going to look like and how that will affect this property? I mean, so that's, you know, there's still a bunch of questions. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the 25-foot. I think it, but, you know, it's, again, it is being contingent upon the rezoning, and I think it's just too early in the whole process to make it contingent on the rezoning.
Anyone else? All right. Commissioners? Anybody want to say anything?
Yes.
What y'all going to do, folks? We can't sit here and stare at each other all night.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve application of ZM 4680 without either of the conditions suggested by staff.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving ZM 4680 without the recommendations of the staff, signify by raising your right hand. Three. All those opposed, signify by raising your right hand. Four. Staff recommendations, go with the rezoning.
I'm sorry? It needs to be a new motion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you just voted to deny, so you would have to amend the motion.
All right. I need a new motion.
All right, I'm making a motion to approve it, but only at a 60-foot width, but continue at the 6,000-square-foot. I'm not sure exactly how to word that correctly, but...
They currently have the right to develop it, the 60-foot lot width, so that would basically mean nothing, so.
No vote required.
All right. So, yeah. So you just make a motion to approve it? Is that what you're saying? With the staff recommendations?
With the staff recommendation to leave it at 60, but not move it to 50.
That was a staff recommendation?
No, the staff recommendation was to move it to 50.
Okay. Yeah, no, no rezoning is necessary for them to develop at 60-foot, so they could do it, they could come in tomorrow and submit a preliminary plat at 60-foot lot width.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny, let me find the number, ZM 4680 as presented.
I second the motion.
You're making a motion to deny it?
Yes.
The whole thing?
Yes. The question is to reduce the width from 60 feet to 50 feet. They already have the, they can already move forward with a 60-foot-wide lot. So I'm making a motion to deny the request to reduce it to 50 feet.
Okay. And you're good with the other? The two accesses?
That's not part of...
No. Yeah, he's moving to deny it entirely. You would just vote no on what's presented. So they wouldn't be moving to the 50-foot lot width at all if his motion carries.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Have a motion, a second, to deny the reduction. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Three. Opposed?
Let's do it again.
Let's do it again.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion, that we approve application ZM 4680 with the first condition, with the 25-foot for along Harry Driggers to the county to accommodate a planned future for laning, but without the second condition, that can be dealt with at the time of site plan approval if actually required by the fire department.
I second that motion.
Okay. Does everybody understand what the motion was?
I need clarity on that, please.
Now, what does it stand as far as the width of the lot in this motion? 50.
They would leave it at 50. It would be reduced to 50. The 25-foot right-of-way would be given, and the second access would be covered in the site plan approval.
And just a comment, if I can, that, that my thought process is with a 120-foot lot, most likely those houses are going to sit, have a greater amount of space between them and the properties behind them than if they had 100-foot. So all the people buying in that subdivision, every single house is going to know that it's 50 feet when they buy. They know they're going to be that close to the neighbor. But by doing 120 feet deep, in my opinion, it actually helps the property owners behind them, because these properties then have the potential of having bigger backyards, so their actual house will sit further away from the adjoining rear property lot. That, I mean, that's why it's okay with me, just to say.
Okay. Does everybody understand their motion? Do I have a second?
You didn't.
Oh, yeah, you second. Okay. All those in favor of that motion signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Three. Motion passes. Do we need to do it again? All right. Moving right along, ZM 4681, 744 Canal Road rezoned. Request to amend the planned development district for property at 744 Canal Road, parcel number 03-03352, to allow storage, self-storage units and recreational vehicle and boat storage as allowed uses in the PD. Kip Goodbred EMC Engineering Agent for Spark IV LLC owner.
All right. ZM 4681, 744 Canal Road rezoned. So this property is currently in a planned development district. It was approved, I think approximately 10 or so years ago, or more than that, it was 2005. And they had initially planned to do multifamily, so that's currently what the zoning is allowed on this site, is for multifamily development. But they would like to do RV and boat storage and mini warehouse storage on the site, so they are proposing to amend their planned development text to allow that. They have removed the multifamily uses from, from that, from that text, so really, it's just the storage that would be allowed on this site if approved. Comprehensive planned future land use is commercial. And, let's see, this is the property right here. So it is nearby the other project that you saw earlier this evening on Canal Road. The owner of the property currently owns the property adjacent that has storage on it. This is another planned development text right here on Canal, and then this is the property in question. This is the Brunswick-Altemah Canal back here. And this is their proposed layout for the site plan. I mean, you do have a site plan that's coming up after this agenda item as well. There's a lake on the property right here. There's another residence in this location. They are showing a type E buffer along Canal Road in this location. They're showing a type A between the single-family home on the FA property and the site. However, the owner of this property has requested that, and this is new information since the packet went out, just today, I was notified that this owner has requested no buffer along here because they enjoy looking at the lake. And so if there was a buffer here, that would impede their, their view of the lake. So I do have a letter from them asking for that buffer to be modified or, or removed in that location. Just one note on this, and I'll, this is more for the site plan, but they are showing, there's a drainage easement right here in this top corner. They are showing a little bit of this storage area or gravelled area extending into the easement, and that would not be allowed in that drainage easement, but that's more of a site plan concern, not as much on the rezon. And then this is their proposed amendment to the planned development text outlining the storage use. And these are your proposed actions. Staff is recommending approval of the application. And Kip Goodbred is here representing the owner of the property. If you have any questions? Thank you.
What's, what's the buffer going to be along Canal Road?
So it's a type E, so that would be a 10-foot-wide buffer with a mix of landscaping, so I think it's like every 50 feet, there's a deciduous tree, and then there's, you know, kind of a lower hedge that would be along there.
Because where the, where the current storage unit is, there isn't any. You know, it's just, you just look on Canal, right back into the storage units.
Right.
And so, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it was developed before we were acquiring the buffers along the public roadway, or perhaps it was modified. I'd have to pull the, the site plan to see what the situation was there.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff, commissioners? Will the applicant please come forward?
Good evening, Kip Goodbred with EMC Engineering. I'm here to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Butler. Okay. Mr. Goodbred, the buffer, are you okay with that, or is it something that will be in additional cost, you know?
Well, we did show the buffers as per the county requirements, but we would request that the buffers would, could be removed, at least on the, on the front of the property along Canal Road. There will be landscaping in the front, we just ask that we don't have to do the type E buffer.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, sir. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward in opposition to ZM 4681, please do so.
I'm Julian Smith again, and this is the one application that I was most interested in speaking on. The applicant had originally got approval of a PD text to have residential housing on this lot. This would be residential. But for some reason, he was not able to market it for residential. And yet, here we are tonight with the approval of other residential developments, very intense development. This would be a better site for residential development than for self-storage. But the applicant owns a self-storage place, and he wants to, to expand it. This used to be primarily a residential neighborhood. That's why before the canal crossing development was built, a lot of small, old, single-family homes were demolished. I went through that area many times before they were demolished. It is a shame what has happened to that section of Canal Road. And I'm speaking partly as someone who owns land on another part of Canal Road. I also own land on the canal itself, and I find it disgraceful that developers have turned their back on this historic canal. Now, the owner of the parcel immediately to the north of the Spark IV property has a much larger property. The, his potential for good, upscale, or even medium-density residential development is being spoiled by what the applicant proposes to do on this site. And could the planner, could Ms. Leaf put up the aerial photo, the zoning map on the screen for you to see? I don't know whether you can see this very clearly, but if you look at the tax map for this property, immediately above the purple lot parcel, which is Horseshoe Lane Trailer Park, you should be able to see, and much easier if you go to the tax map, that the applicant has intruded into what seems to be the county right-of-way with storage. Some years ago, when he and his partner wanted to trade a small amount of road, road frontage for several acres, more than several acres along the canal, he had already cleared some county land in expectation, I believe, that he would be getting that in the trade. So I think this, this whole application should be looked at again. I think there should be a site walk at which the public is invited. And I would like you to go to item five on page five, where we are told that the planning, I'm sorry, got the wrong page here. That dump, the sewage dump for RV vehicles is right down by the canal, and there was a response from Joint Water and Sewer that that is not permitted. You will see on note seven on the site plan that the dumping station is shown for use of RV tenants only, et cetera. That note does not address the joint water and sewer concern. Finally, my last thing.
Mr. Smith, your time is up.
The clearing of this land was an act of legal vandalism. Legal vandalism. The applicant has destroyed some beautifully trees for no particularly good reason. Yes, I'm finished.
All right, sir.
And I'm not going to speak to the site plan the next thing, so you get your three minutes back there. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
We appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, I'm Miranda Smith. I've lived on Harry Driggers for 20 years. I'm not exactly in opposition of it, but I would like to address something that has not been addressed. I'm not sure, I know several of you do live in that area, and you know that we have a lot of flooding. The canal's overrun flooding. In a situation like the storage units and all the concrete, the pavement, it all causes storm runoff drainage. I believe that all of the apartments at Fletzy were flooded twice during our hurricanes, the whole bottom floor. I think they had loss due to that, and, and there is, has been no, I don't know if there's a density in storage units on this particular property or not, but it is a massive piece of property that that runoff is going to go into that canal, and it is going to go on... go onto Fletzy, and it is gonna go into hospice, because we all absorb it. And many people are gone during the hurricanes. I have been here, so I've seen it, have videos of it. There is nowhere for rainwater to go regardless of whatever type of engineering. And I just ask you to address that maybe some type of density can be, you know, put onto the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Hearing none, seeing none. The public hearing is closed. Applicant, if you want to come down and address a couple of these issues that have been raised by the speakers, you can do so.
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Smith stated that the applicant had, did the original zoning for residential, was unable to market that, so he's changed it to storage. That's actually incorrect. The original planned development text that was developed for residential was by another property owner. The applicant actually bought this property from the bank because it was foreclosed on with the downturn of the economy back in 2008. So it's not that they flip-flopped and changed their mind. As far as the stormwater runoff, will meet Glen County's requirements of having detention. Our pre-developed flow or post-developed flows cannot exceed the pre-developed flow, so.
All right, sir. Thank you. All right, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZM 4681 as presented.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving ZM 4681, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Site plan approval, SP 4682, 744 Canal Road. Consider site plan approval for a new self-storage complex located at 744 Canal Road, parcel number 03-03352. Property is zone planned development district and subject to proposed PD amendment. Kip Goodbred, EMC Engineering Agent for Spark IV, LLC owner.
This is SP 4682, 744 Canal Road, and this is the site plan for the project that you just heard for the rezon. And of course, the Board of Commissioners has the final review on the rezon, so any action taken tonight on the site plan would be, of course, pending their final decision on the rezon. And as you saw, this is the site plan. And just a couple of things that I mentioned in the last one, they are showing the type A buffer around this FA lot. This buffer right here is what the owner of the FA property would like to have modified and taken off of the plan. They are showing this type A along Canal. And then back in this corner, I've recommended a condition that this does not extend into the drainage easement, because that's not allowed to have any intrusions into that drainage easement. This is the letter from the owner, Mr. Ward, and just an aerial view of where they currently have a view of the lake. And by adding a type A buffer, which would be either 12 feet of landscape property with a fence, or 20 feet of landscaping, they want to make sure that they can continue to see the lake. So these are your possible actions, and staff's recommending a few conditions here. As I mentioned, no encroachments are allowed into the drainage and utility easements. Second, is the site plan approval is valid only if ZM 4681 is approved by the Board of Commissioners. And then, because this request about the buffer just came in today, and this was not in your packet, just in red, I'm showing if you would like to modify the buffer. Type A buffer is... No type A buffer is required adjacent to the east side of 760 Canal Road, which is parcel number 03-03356. And Mr. Goodbred is here. Do you have any questions? And I'm happy to answer them as well.
All right. Any questions for staff, commissioners?
Can you give us an update? I know we have this letter here about the sewage dump issue, and that they had a meeting with Joint Water and Sewer, so sorry, I don't have my big plat. Site plan with me, what the determination, where's that at, and what was the determination with Joint Water and Sewer?
Okay. Yeah, there's a... I might ask Mr. Goodbred to address that, because I think he has probably more detail on that than... If that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Kip Goodbred with EMC Engineering. We actually did meet with the Joint Water and Sewer. Originally, that was their comment, that they would not allow an RV dumping station. But after further discussion with them, they realized it's not just to pay $5 or $10, and anybody can dump it. It's primarily for when RVers are coming off the road, been traveling. They'll have a little bit in their holding tank and need to get rid of. They also required that we monitor the dumping station to make sure illegal chemicals, illegal being antifreeze and oils and that kind of stuff are not being dumped. So we do have that. That would be part of their lease agreement that we will submit to Joint Water and Sewer for review. But as of today, we have met their comments, and they've signed off compliant with what was negotiated in the meeting.
How do you propose to monitor a dump station to make sure that nobody dumps something illegally into it?
The cameras, they have security cameras on-site, so that will be one of the locations. They'll have a lease agreement with the end user. They will not dump. And then I believe... Is there something else you were gonna do? Signs will be posted, no illegal dumping.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, commissioners?
Mr. Goodbred, will that dumping station, will it be pumped into a holding tank? Will it be on county or city sewer, or will it be in a septic tank?
It will be tied into the public sewer, and we plan to use a grinder station. Won't be a hold... It's not necessarily a holding tank or a septic tank, same type unit that the canal's storage facility uses for their front office.
The point I was trying to get at, it's not gonna be held there. It's gonna be sent down the line.
That is correct.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I offer the motion that there be an approval on site plan SP 4682 with the three conditions recommended by the staff.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Anything else, staffy?
Yes, sir, that's it tonight.
Meeting's adjourned.